Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, November 14th. Can we come together, please? Ms. Bain, Member Bain, please have a seat. Tonight, yeah, please. No, down the hall, on the left. Tonight is Monday, November 14th, 2011. It's on or about 7:00 PM. Mayor, is there something you'd like to share with all of us?
Oh, yeah.
Well, in a moment, you'll have your opportunity. This evening, City Council will be meeting in two committee meetings. First, Finance and Personnel, then Planning and Development. Committee Chair for Finance and Personnel, Member Sands.
Mr. President, 2012 budget work has begun. The mayor has worked on it. He's talked to his department heads.
We're still getting bits and pieces coming in.
Bits and pieces are still coming in.
Yes.
We did talk about it at our auditors' meeting on Thursday. And also, our auditor is still gathering information. Did you have anything to add?
No, I don't. There's the revenue side of it, and Ray, you know, it's, you know, the mayor prepared his expense budget, and so when he asks us for information, then we will give it to him. As he said, he's getting budget, you know, budget info from his department heads, and Ray just sent you an updated...
Version two.
Version two of the 100s, which of course is the main one that we start with. So, he has that from our office. Other than that...
Okay. What are... Can I pass out some things?
Please.
Okay. Essentially, what I'm doing is I'm working on our budget, and everything in white has been worked on. Ken's not here, okay. Everything in yellow is not worked on.
Oh, this is a whole cartridge.
I know. Well, that's part of the budget, too. You want one? And here you go. Essentially, what you're saying is the TC 100s and the general fund have been worked, have been pretty much shaped up. I got the latest version this morning from Ray. Some of the numbers were off, so, but most of them were intact, so I didn't have to move that much around. Next one, of course, is TC 300s, 200, 300s. If you look, it's pretty, still pretty high priced. If you remember what Kathy was talking about in terms of revenue, the general fund, it was a lot less, and therefore, I still have to wear it down, but you'll notice I have some big-ticket items in there, including $999,000 worth of requests from the fire department, and 36 for another police cruiser. Some of the stuff that the fire chief talks, who's asking for, of course, is a replacement vehicle for 1008, 1008. That's the old Jeep. He also wants to do an upgrade for the kitchens, both headquarters, Station 2. Radio upgrade, of course, would depend on that grant that he's coming through from the Marx. That's a 10 cent match. I stuck it in there, but that's unknown. Replacement furnaces for headquarters, Station 2. And he also asked for an upgrade of computers, which I did not stick in there because I know the IT officer is asking for an individual list of what needs are for next year in terms of computers and upgrades. So, as I say, everything in white, and I'm working my way down. I'm not there yet, you can tell. Some of the information is still smutty. In particular, I would point out, I haven't put anything in the capital outlay for the bus system, although I think we have a bus slated for this year. I need to check with Charlene, who is not in today. And then, as I said, there's still one, still waiting for information from the court, and there are various grants. So, just so you know. So, it's a work in progress and going on, and I'll answer any questions at that point.
At what point?
Again, this is all due to you, and it's new to me.
Okay.
On that update, that's why.
Yes, thank you. And that's, at this point, and this is the month of November. We often in, put this all together in December, have some extra meetings, and so I don't anticipate that this year's going to be any different from that. We came in tonight and found...
That, your next section in there is economic development council, Convention Visitors Bureau. You're talking about the contracts, I believe, is on the agenda.
Yes.
Paige is here, obviously, from the Tourism Bureau, and Todd Shelton is from the Economic Development Council. They read the agendas, they get the agendas, and they're here.
Okay. And, so, we have, we have talked about this, again, at our auditors' meeting. Both the Athens Convention Visitors Bureau and the Athens County Economic Development Council get a percentage of our tax receipts that are hotel motel tax receipts within the city of Athens. This also expands and goes into the county also, but of course, we're only dealing with the Athens receipts. And in the past, we have given 35 percent of those tax collections to the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and we word the support for EDC as 35,000, 35 percent up to $55,000. And so, in the past year, the Economic Development Council has received $55,000 of support, the Convention Visitors Bureau. Paige, I'm sorry, I've...
About $96,000.
Okay. About $96,000 for their, for their 35 percent. And so, Member Bain?
Plus, we give the building, the grounds, parking, the utilities, repairs, for the structure that they're, so it's 35 plus that additional...
You pay the utilities?
I thought it was a dollar. Who raised it?
51.
Who raised it?
Outrageous. Okay.
I felt a new opportunity for revenue enhancement.
I'd like to know who raised it. I thought it was a dollar.
Actually, Nancy, you're right. The rent is a dollar, and the $50 goes into an escrow account to help pay for repairs and stuff. So, it's $50 plus a dollar. But so paid, as she said, they pay a 51 a month.
Okay. He asked if you...
It was a, oh, it's an escrow account. 212-493284. It's about, it's, it's 51. You're right. I was just reading, sorry.
So, but $600 for repairs. We did quite a bit more than that this past year with floor repairs. However, it was a matter of discussion at our recent auditors' meeting that we would continue these contracts as, as done in 2011. So, our anticipation right now is that they would be the same, same wording as they were before. We have received a report from the Convention Visitors Bureau. Tonight, we received a report from Economic Development Council. We have not finalized our budget. If you have questions regarding either report, please raise those at subsequent meetings. Mayor, did you have anything to add to that?
Yes. Some of the revenue projections, which I don't have firmly, probably because I left them downstairs. Auditor Hector mentioned, gave me some information about the projected revenues for 2012 in that tourism. She was looking at a slight dip, I think. I forgot the percentage. So, there is a concern that we might get a slight dip on it. I do not know why you'd have one year different than the other if the monies are, you know, if tourism's still flowing. So, the number that you see in there, the 147, that's in the, this ink that I burned up here, is what I was using as her revenue, 147 total, that we appropriate to cover both areas. We may, if tourism goes up, of course, we'd have to appropriate more over time. But that's, I was working off the projected revenues that Kathy put together.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, they're both here to speak to it, if you want to have any questions. This is about the third year for the Economic Development Council. It's, it's not been, you know, since 2008, things have been flowing the easiest, but Todd and his group, when I say his group, Sarah, there's a group of two, have been pretty innovative in trying on bringing businesses and making contacts. They have streamlined a lot of their marketing over the past two, three years. They have also dovetailed with the homecoming to bring in alumni, entrepreneur alumni, to let them know. They've gone up to Columbus, actually did outreach to Columbus to bring down small business entrepreneurs. They've tried various methods. Some work well, better than others, but they're fine-tuning it all the time. And again, the important part of this is that we're coordinating with the university and the county together to make a regional economic development program. We also, they've, in the past three years, have enlisted Hocking College involved in it, in Nelsonville, as well as the Chamber. So, there's a, there's a good pooling that's existing right now, and that's why I recommend keeping it going.
Thank you.
Okay. Probably more than we need to know. So, Todd doesn't even have to get up and say anything, unless he had questions.
He's a good board member.
Yeah, I'm a good board member.
As I said, since we're just seeing this, we may have some questions at a later point. Anybody have questions right now, or do we want to save those for a later discussion? Okay. I think we just got the information, so. Anything, questions for Paige Alost about the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau? It's been around longer. It's, it's more obvious right there on East State Street, and they have lots of activities going on throughout the year.
It doesn't take a lot of time, but they've taken the time to come here, with Paige and Todd, so if they have, I don't know, the 32nd or 1 minute elevator talk of what, why, you know, why it's important for our community, or any particular item in the report that you wanted to highlight for us? I hate to...
I brought to Jim sort of an overview of what we...
Paige, Paige.
If you come to the chair, we'll go up to the microphone.
Nobody can hear you talk.
Very few people have ever said that to me before. But what I brought to Jim was an overview of the funding that we received, both from the city and the county. And this goes to your view since 1996. We've been around a little bit longer than that. But you can see how that money has grown for both the county and the city over the course of the last 15 years or so. And just for the last three years of projections, you know, we had a $10,000 jump between 2009 and 2010, and about $1,000 of difference, which is about what we projected from last year to this year. And we sort of anticipate that we're going to remain relatively the same, at least over the course of the next year, until the economy begins to kind of turn around a little bit more. Although, I will tell you, we had a record year in attendance for everything that we did this year. And the great thing about this money is, when you invest it, you get a return on it. Overall, in the state, we're seeing a return of, for every dollar spent in tourism, about $13 come back to your local community in exchange, which is amazing. And of course, the other investment for part of this is the 30 Mile Meal, which has been an incredible experience so far, which started out as a tourism marketing campaign, and now is, well, we laughed today at lunch, it's Food Law. So, we're excited to see that program grow and create jobs and create a positive economic impact here. And we appreciate the opportunity to continue to do good things. We appreciate your support.
Thank you. Mr. Shelton?
I think these people always have something ready to say. Oh, yes. Good evening. Thank you for having me, and have me say a few words. Todd Shelton, Director, Athens County Economic Development Council. Been at the realm here for three years. Now, I don't have a lot of time to talk, but we've accomplished a lot, and we want to continue to build partnerships and to get all the stakeholders around the table to help better our county. And we have worked with private developers, we've worked with public officials to help on infrastructure projects. We continue to do one of the most important things you can for economic development, especially right now in this time, which is helping existing businesses grow and expand. Obviously, we always want to attract new ones in, but we feel it's very important to work with small and large companies that we have here in the county and for Athens. And we've recently received a grant from Buckeye Hills to acquire software to actually track these visits and spit out a whole bunch of different data that we're looking forward at the end of the year to be able to share regarding how well we're doing, some of the feedback from the companies in regards to, you know, why they're here, why they like being here, and what we can do better. So, we, we continue to work with them, and one of our major accomplishments is that we continue, just like the mayor said, to market. We have a really good website, and we've also retained a former employer, employee of Paige Alost, who started her own, her own marketing company that's helping us do marketing for Athens County and Athens City. So, if there's any other questions?
Just that, that information coming from your, the program from Buckeye Hills would certainly be of interest to us, too, so...
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we've visited, and you'll see in your packet, I put some information. We've visited with about 35 companies, and what we wanted to make sure is, is that they know that we are their outlet to our elected officials. And since my board consumes of, economic commissioner, the mayor, Steve Golding from the university, Corey Taylor from Nelsonville, Dr. Erickson from Hocking College, Jack Bordel from our Port Authority, and Jen Simon from our, for our CIC, we put together a great board who can make things happen quickly. So, we want businesses to know that we're their first point of contact, and if they have issues, to definitely contact us, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, Member Button?
Thank you. I might just comment and observe on both Paige's efforts and Todd's efforts. I've seen both of them in the community at various public events, discussing these matters, these various issues. I know they're out there trying on their respective job responsibilities. I know Todd reached, his office reached out to me in an effort to get a hold of a local entrepreneur, so I know that they're in the process of trying to do what's best for the community.
Thank you. We'll probably have more later. Okay. We have an item on here, stormwater connection. Member Bain?
Yes. We left a zero off the top three charges. I remember saying, boy, it went down.
Okay.
And now we know why. Andy asked that we change it, bring it back to its current form.
Does amendment of an ordinance?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was wondering why this was coming up again. Which ordinance was it?
The top three thing we did. I don't know when. When did we do it, David? Can you remember?
Time flies. June.
June? Yeah. I should have followed up on mine.
Okay, so, that'll be on...
Up for the first reading.
First reading, correct?
Also, we'll have a request for stormwater connection. I mean, wait a minute. Chemicals coming up.
Chemicals. Thank you.
All right. Next thing on the agenda is, Jim and I had a meeting with the personnel person today concerning insurance. Oh, we didn't quite have a meeting.
Some people were there.
Some people were there. And there'll be a slew of ordinances coming out. Claudia is attempting to go to an annual basis. It starts the 1st of January, and to that end, there are several things that need to happen with your permission. The first one is that we are going to increase our stop-loss insurance up to the amount that we cover before stop-loss insurance comes into play, to $100,000. So, our premium will be down a little bit. The cost is going to be about $87.20 for each single coverage, $180 per employee per month for family. And so, we've opted for the less expensive version. And so, that fee will go up, but her recommendation, Claudia's recommendation is to do that very thing. So, if you have a terrible accident on the 1st of January or thereabouts, you would end up in the city of Athens and paying, we would end up paying for that employee generally, $100,000 minus the amount they're responsible, which is about $2,597,000. That would be if there were a terrible incident. We are self-insured, which means that we have fairly, a fairly good system. I mean, I think it's really good, as long as we don't have any disasters in a small group. But that's basically, the decision has, was made a while ago to continue on with that. So, that's the first thing on the agenda, and that will be authorized in an ordinance to go with stop-loss. We, they figure out how much we have to put into the pool to cover the potential accident or the potential cancer or multiple cancers, and that's what they've come up with. We had two choices. One was for $85,000, the other was $100,000. The last couple of times, we've opted for the higher deductible. Those of you probably at home, you know, this might be the way you operate, too. I don't know. It's, it's just like, you know, whatever you think about insurance, it seemed like, and I'll go along with Claudia's recommendation on this. All right, the second ordinance, if anybody has a question, is a revision to 7811. And this is in the non-union ordinance. The non-union almost always, and I didn't get this passed out, I should have done it before. The non-union people almost always get some, are getting things for this. Claudia's asked, here, a second, Chris, and I'll get one over to the mayor. Claudia's asked, I don't know if the mayor's seen this or not, or Kathy. I should have given it when I was over there, but there it is. We modified our monthly premiums, and this is only in the non-union. We still haven't implemented this in the bargaining units. But anyway, we're, and that's some considerable consternation in some quarters, and probably, but we said, but the monthly premiums are down there, and you can see singles, one dependent and a employee and one dependent, and then the family, $80. Right now, Medicare, if you're in slightly higher income categories, it's double that, $161 a month. Coverage, most of you don't have to worry about that, you have to... In-network, there's some deductibles added. So, everybody pays a premium, everybody pays deductibles. I believe our goal is to get to that uniformly across the board. Car insurance, and then out-of-pocket maximum, lifetime maximum. There is none. We raised it to 2 million a few years ago, but in accordance with Affordable Health Care Act, sometimes known as Obamacare, there is no lifetime maximum. And that's basically what, again, the insurance administrative personnel person, we seem to be human resource person, has recommended to us. Okay? Anybody have a question? I hope somebody gets geared up and thinks it's all sort of after I'm gone. It seems like I'm all alone here sometimes. Okay.
So, a couple of things with the deductible, the first part, the stop-loss you talked about, I think Claudia was saying that was about a 9 percent increase over time, so that's in the mid-range of what has been going on in the industry, I believe. You said it was close to 10.
She didn't share that with us. We were just talking about which one to choose, so I, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, well, she said it was still, not a bad mix for what we have right now.
Yeah, so, once again, we have to say, what we do is we put money in a bucket, and, or in a line, and we pay administrative costs. The employees have been sharing, at least the non-union employees, all, and some parts of the other, paying part of the cost of that. And then, in exchange, we have, we have the schedule of reimbursements if they're in-network, because we added managed care a few years ago. We pay it out of that, those funds. And so, everybody pays, I mean, non-union now pays a premium, and they all pay it, will have a deductible as of the 1st of the year.
And that's usually coming out of, just for your information, is the 866 fund line, medical, and that's...
A set, a set fund.
...appraisal for appropriation this year was $2,397,000.
Yeah, enough to roll that into the next year, one month. But anyway, there, there it is.
It gives you how much we bought, we spent on something.
Yeah, it's a lot. The third thing, and this one is really important. We were dealing with a drug, our drug coverage was somewhere in the vicinity of $400, $500,000. That's a lot of money. And luckily, Claudia went out and looked around. We were dealing with a, with an entity that was, I mean, we were dealing with an entity in which we were paying mostly, almost retail, the reimbursement for drugs, which is something we shouldn't have been doing. And we're going to now go up to a third-party drug administrator. It's called a PBM, yet another acronym for all of you to learn, a Pharma Benefits Manager. And she will be picking out one that will save us money, going the same direction as we did in insurance a few years ago. That would be in a managed care area. So, with your permission, we'll have that ordinance up for first reading, against effective the 1st of January. She's hoping she can get this done. And the fourth thing, you know, the idea of the 1st of January, when our total insurance program is supposed to start, the way she wants to do it, we're going to renew our third-party administrator contract for three years, at her request. And she's going to go with...
Yeah.
She's going to go with, I just had, I was going to say Harrington, UHM, UHR?
UMR.
UMR, thank you.
A record name.
I'm not remembering what the acronym is. Those are the four things that are, that are going to be up for reading. If anybody has a question, we have, we have quite a bit of insurance activity, if you want to take a look at what she's come up with. It should be transparent, pretty much to our citizen, to our employees, but it will not be so leaky on our pocketbook.
And concerning the drug management, I guess really what we've been told is that we're so small that they just want to push us out to some administrator. So, we're kind of doing a search, and that's really what we need, is authorization to do that bidding, search and bid process.
Yeah. So that we're not paying retail price for drugs, and we can bring the price down a little bit.
Just...
Yeah.
We noticed some changes here happening pretty soon, pretty quickly. Insurance years always begin with the calendar year. We have, for some reason, chosen to initiate all of our work in August, and so we're just moving back to coincide with the insurance year, which makes things easier for everybody and hopefully reduces costs, so.
And it should be almost transparent to the individuals involved. I mean, there will be some change because of that old August deadline, but it's minimal. You haven't raised the rates? Yes?
I have just a couple of questions about the chart. So, I'm sure I understand what's happening here with the summary, that what we're saying is, is that there is coverage in-network. So, if you go down to the second table where it says 100, and then 200, 300, are the, and then there's another column that says 300, 600, 900?
Out-of-network.
Is that out-of-network?
Out-of-network.
Okay. And then, the other question I had was, at the top, it says fixed cost equals 35 percent.
Okay. Well, then, okay, so, what happened in a moment when Jim and I were earlier wrestling over this question with the administration? We ended up with what seemed to be a way to, in a non-union setting, come up with a equitable charge. And that is, the fixed charge is the cost that the third-party administrator assesses against us for each employee, without regard to how much they use the system. And the second one is, they used a proportion that each individual would occur for stop-loss. So, and that ends up being about 35 percent. And in the ordinance, the non-union ordinance is, it's currently written, oh, line one, here we go. It says that the city's fixed cost, identified annually by the personnel, it will be Human Resource Director, reported by the scene to the auditor, will be adjusted accordingly in order that the employees pay a 35 percent monthly contribution equal to 35 percent of the fixed cost of the health benefit. Okay, and that is not, anyway, I know 15 percent of the total cost of the benefits, so you have the deductibles and the other thing, too. And it's insurance, so some people, luckily, don't have to use it, and other people do. It's not, and that's basically it. Now, those of you who are continuing on into the next, into the wild and yonder that's coming in the future, 35 percent was something, other was, there is 35 percent. It doesn't have to be 35 percent. It could be 10 percent, it could be 100 percent. It was deemed to be fair, and, you know, as a parent, I always said... It was, it was deemed to be fair, and, you know, as a parent, I always said, there's no such thing as fair, I don't, but anyway, so having said that, it was, there was an effort to solve a problem, which was almost interactable at that point. Okay. Any other questions? That was a good question, Chris. She asked another one? No?
I think that's it for now.
You're gonna be, I'm gonna just put all these insurance things in a file and pass them to you.
It's gotta be this bit.
Yeah, it's kind of lost. We can't.
Member Bob, let me see your hand up?
No, I can't.
I want to ask what she has insurance.
I'm uninsured.
I know. It's just like, oh my goodness.
Anybody have any other questions?
I, yeah, I also have some, one other thing.
Okay, you do, okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, we have some personnel things to change, but when will I be able to spend a moment talking about the solid waste district, just very quickly? Under miscellaneous? Are we at miscellaneous yet?
We are among miscellaneous.
Okay.
Two thousand twelve chemicals.
We did that.
She's been bringing forward.
She said there are chemicals.
Especially salt. I thought salt seemed important.
That's a bid for the one frequent plant and waste-waste frequent plant chemical. That's what you're talking about. It really is.
Okay, so, and then the insurance was kind of under miscellaneous. So, go ahead with miscellaneous, and then.
Chris has miscellaneous also?
Yeah.
We also have some personnel questions from, from the, from Paula. The mayor and I went to the Athens-Hawking Solid Waste District meeting, and I was wondering if he would be all right with us, since I put this on the desk back there, and I'm sure you took it home and read every single word of it, that we would, as soon as the notification that the plan is ready would come, would put the ordinance up and pass it. The reason, one reason it's in our interest to do this, just one example, right now, it's very costly to process the materials that are collected in the outlying areas, and we're only getting a dollar a ton. Eventually, the Solid Waste District will get three dollars a ton at the landfill as well. We need to make that happen quickly. Now, if it doesn't happen, you all know that the world will change. But right now, we're hoping that if we move this forward, I talked to the mayor a bit the other day, and I think, he encouraged me, we'll go ahead and pass it as quickly as we get it, if that's okay with you. We've done it before, it's the same thing.
Twice.
Twice, yeah, and, you know, we can really hope that this time, thunderbolt of reasonableness will, will strike all the affected parties, and we will get it through. Otherwise, the sky may fall.
I did re, I don't know if you did, I assume it's a string memory you received from Solid Waste District, Athens Recycling, that they do have a link and have that as a PDF on your website.
Thank you, that's very good. Yeah, we were trying to get, if you want to read this thing, if you want a copy of your very own.
Or just download it, I believe, I'll get that to Scott, I think, as a link to the Solid Waste District. I don't know if it's an, I haven't had a chance to check it, since we have hard copies, but it should be, I'll leave a link to their site, or to a PDF on their site.
And as a, as a byproduct of this, it would be hard to summarize the experience of, in this setting, and the people from, there are great opinions, variations of opinions. The one that I've heard that somewhat amazes me is there, some of the people from the other county think that we should just put everything in a garbage truck and send it out to, out to, to Circleville, and let them take care of it. And, you know, I'm going, holy Moses, what are we talking about? But anyway, as an interdate to that, we were presented, and we didn't do it, just because we were really interested in getting, either getting this done or not done, whatever it was, getting resolution. But there's a man named Kyle O'Keefe, who works for Rare Action, who has become a born-again clean products person, in my opinion. He started off sort of with the idea, oh, I mean, it was a big bunch of, you know, just a assembly line and pull it off, you know? Now he's kind of thinking, ooh, it's better to have high-quality materials, because you make more money. And so, he offered and wanted to make a, do a study, funded in part by Sugar Bush. And it kind of got to a point, we were unable to move, and so, I suggested that I would plead with you, maybe as soon as it passes, and that would be end of February, to authorize the mayor to work with Mr. Allison, the commissioner, to get that study moving. Because I think he can, he and his group can zero in on how to do it better, rather than the big garbage truck on the assembly line.
You're talking about the Zero Waste?
Yeah, the Zero Waste Initiative. So, when he brings it up in February, you'll remember where it came from. Kind of a tacit promise that we would consider it, although we can't, I can't do any promising right now.
I'm aware of that.
I could write a check, but I don't think I will.
Essentially, what they're looking at is, can you actually, the concept of Zero Waste is that we recycle everything. It's, it's a hard one to wrap your head around, but at the same time, looking and saying, can we actually offset the cost of recycling with products that come out of the other side? We all know it's a hundred and, to a hundred and fifty dollars a ton for cardboard, for instance, and aluminum, of course, is much higher, but are there actually second uses for that? We have had diverse attempts at this, everything from leaf pickups for composting, or the, you know, you saw in the Post today, the composting, million-dollar composter for the university. So, there's a trend going towards this, but the other uses, of course, is can you use products for wood products, glass, and metals? And really, what they're, they're talking about, they're endeavoring to do is to actually do a study and say, how do other people handle this? And is it possible to actually get a market for that in the district, which would be the two-county district? So, the idea is that you retain, not only do you retain resources, because they are resources on some level, but also jobs that, that would have the trickle-down effect. And it's really more of a study. It came a little late in the, in the mix for the, the present plan, because the plan has to be done by March fourteenth, I think, or fifteenth.
It's sent in, right? So, we have to be through with it the end of February.
So, this added another wrinkle, but the idea of putting out a, a survey and looking at this, looking at the potential, and evaluation where we want to go in our solid waste projects for the next five years is worthwhile. They, they estimate about thirty-thousand-dollar budget, ten thousand, which is Sugar Bush, a good percent of, could be sweat equity, as well as volunteer work, because they have many devoted people on this. And they were asking for somewhere between ten and twelve thousand.
Which our part would be smaller.
Yes. So, this was a conversation that we were trying to, that was discussed last Wednesday, was it?
Oh, a century ago.
Seems like a long time ago.
I was visualizing each of us, every time you put out a beer bottle, getting a raise back.
Yeah, you saw those flyers out on there. I, I was knocking doors all last, last week, and there was a flyer, I've got, got leaves, did you see that one that says, donate your leaves, and you're gonna get a five-gallon bucket of clean compost, you know?
Mm-hmm, that's.
And the conversation I had with various people is like, we don't want any of that, or how do I get two five-gallon buckets, you know? So.
Everybody has a one.
And there is a big lease, you know, toll-faring system out there for bags of leaves, I've seen happen all the time. So, there's a, there is a value to these things, and it's just not the sticker that we put on them.
And that, you know, and again, let's, just going back to my teaching, or just a second, I think that, in order to have the clean product we have, we've had to invest quite a bit of money and effort into it. But white paper is going for about two hundred thousand, two hundred dollars a ton, which is really good. On the other hand, beer bottles are one of our major products, I guess our major. We barely, we don't break even on those folks. But we do still sell them, I think they might be the only entity in the whole state that sells them. And I'm not going to say where we sell them to, because otherwise, everybody else that's closer will start selling to them. But it's, you know, it's still working, but things are changing.
And along the beer bottle line, too, there's a, hopefully, an effort among the bottlers to consider recycling more. I don't think many of them do in our community. I can only think of a few that have made a conscious effort to recycle beer bottles. And if you're out late or up early, you can hear those bottles find their way into the bottom of dumpsters, and that's not a recycling bin.
I know, and it's a, it's a people problem, right? We do have pay-as-you throw, even uptown, or the, I mean, almost certainly, the residential areas at some extent subsidizing that. And I don't know what you do, swap their hands.
For quite a while, were we not able to sell brown glass?
I don't know, I think we are now, though.
It was the green glass, I think we couldn't recycle for a while.
What was it, green?
Yeah, the back though. And so, I mean, I just think we have to enjoy a moment of our success, and hope it doesn't get changed too much. All right, thank you. And so, as soon as Debbie gets the certified letter, she'll have an ordinance up, right? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just had a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's just a quick question. So, where amount?
I thought you had rang up before.
So, you said that we might be, we might receive a visit from Kyle, correct, at Rare Action, and he might request some, a small amount of money? Was that what, was that I heard?
Nancy was kind of promising about six thousand five.
Yes, that's five. Five or six. But I couldn't promise.
That's okay, and this is in February that we might hear this, is that correct?
Whenever he gets his act together, then it does.
If it passes, if it passes a certain entity to our northwest.
Okay.
If it doesn't pass, then it's a whole different.
A whole different bargain.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Read the messenger last week.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sanders. I just wanted to report that we will be moving forward an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the City of Athens and the Hawking-Athens Perry Community Action. Just to give you a little bit of background information, you might remember that, I think earlier this summer, we had talked about, and put out a request for qualifications for any organizations interested in helping us manage the Athens Transit System. For years, this has been pretty much managed internally, with a lot of time with the mayor's, in the mayor's office, the administrative assistant, and the mayor himself. And realizing that with the complexity of all of this, and also having received some, I think, advice from a Department of Transportation consultant, that this would be a good thing to do, to have a third party help us administer it. Hawking-Athens Perry Community Action was the group that responded. They manage the Logan Transit System. They also manage our federal grant program for the Mobility Manager, and both of these programs seem to be operating well, and have received recommendations or comments about their success from the Ohio Department of Transportation. So, this is the group that we've selected to move forward with.
We're at, they also manage the Go Bus, which I reported last week, is, is going great guns. And again, really, the, the idea is, we're gonna, can we actually improve our service with the same amount of money? And the conversations I had with them is that they, it sounds like we, we should be more on top of managing the bus system. McDonald does their side of the management, we do our side, but there needs to be a better oversight. So, having them doing the grant administration might be best way to do this. So, I need to enter into a contract or memorandum of understanding with them, very similar to what we're doing with the Go Bus. We're also, of course, going to put out an RFP for, it's time for us to re-up our contract with McDonald, or administration of the bus system, or either providing the service. We're probably gonna do an extension on that last conversation we had. The, the Coda Group, which is consultants, coming in from ODOT for free, has been very helpful. We actually haven't given her enough things to do, but that's because we're still working through the system. So, there will be some changes along the way, but hopefully for the better. In fact, I, we wouldn't do it otherwise.
We're gonna eventually talk more about personnel changes, and there are two that the personnel director asked me to have you consider, and we can probably discuss them at greater length later on. First of all, is the title change to Human Resources Director, for her. And the second one is to eliminate the interns and create a part-time position for her assistant. So, it should be, I don't know how the FTE will compare, but it's one of the things that she would like to have us consider at some, as we move the non-union forward. Strike the two interns that were previously in that office, and add a part-time person. I believe that the administration is in favor of this, right?
Yes, if you remember, there's actually a slotting for an executive secretary, about thirty-two thousand, which I haven't filled, and Rick never filled as well. What you're seeing with the interns is that there is always a turnover, there's a learning curve, and then there's the confidentiality aspect of doing personnel, that all comes into play. So, the, the desire is to have somebody more consistent there eventually. So, the, I've, I've put in a budget, again, that budget, if you were to look at the budget, you'd see that's thirty-two thousand in there from last year that I did not use because of, actually, somebody gleaned over, I think, to the intern, because the intern's line was at zero at the time. But what you're seeing is that that has not been filled for, since Rick's administration. So, the money's slotted in there. But again, a part-time person is what she's asking for, at the very least, and I think that would be what she needs. Again, as a lot of administration, she's new at the job, but she recognizes the fact that there is, there's a need for somebody to fulfill some of the stuff that does not occur, some of the items that does not occur with an intern. Again, interns disappear during breaks, finals, track events, so. Or whatever, you know, again, their job is to go to school first.
Halloween.
No, no, they're pretty, they're pretty good. But at the same time, you know, their first priority is to go to school, and this is experience for them, but they still have the classes to make, and things like, and, you know, other priorities.
We will probably be doing more work with the non-union ordinance on the personnel area, on the staffing area later on, with changes and reconfigurations, I believe, but this is certainly one that will happen. Unless somebody is objecting.
You've been very patient.
I have been quiet. In addition, I, the request has been made to change the Assistant Service Safety Director title to Deputy Service Safety Director. There may be some additional changes that we're, we're talking about now. I don't know if you talked about the mechanic position?
Maybe we're gonna eliminate, we're going to eliminate one mechanic position.
At least as we head into twenty-twelve, to see how, how we go economically.
The idea would be, again, this is part of, I get, I guess if you were really looking at the facts, you would say that our city agencies, our city divisions have really stepped up and noticed that we do have a financial difficulty, and they've not spent every cent they have in their budgets, which is great, and they've been, you know, doing more with less. And if we eliminate, at this point, one, the, one of the master mechanics, it will require a higher level of organization on the part of one person or two people, and cooperation on the part of the rest, which may or may not be easy, as I heard from today's meeting.
Just, let me say that this, dropping this disposition is the result of a retirement of one of our master mechanics. So, we did have three online, one has retired, we're asking that we not replace that, that position.
And again, this is part of the soft hire freeze we're talking about, attrition if need be. We may have to come back to you, if, if the logistics are such that we have, we step on behind mechanics, we may have to come back to you, but right now, let's do it.
You know, basically what the, what the weeks consisted of several times, and I think it's doable, when I had too much discretionary time. I think, okay, so those were both, the deputy made a change in pay grade, I assume, as, as the Human Resources slash Personnel Person looked at the deputy director and where it should be.
I will have her review that.
Okay. Any others? And with respect to the soft freeze, I, you know, we had a change in the income tax administrator, and there will be no effort to impose a freeze on that one, on council's part, at least on my part. We're gonna do it unless the state wrests that from our hands, right?
I hope so.
And whatever you're doing, I mean, you know, whatever you choose to do, or however you choose to do it. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other things on personnel? You're gonna give us a, like a pay grade on the deputy director?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I mean, not necessarily, but if you want to, you could.
And we may have some future, we just don't know yet, on some possible pending retirements, and how that may shift the personnel.
And so, that's one FTE done, but, I mean, the job you save. Okay?
Member Bob?
Well, I was just, I, if I recall correctly, I know our city planner received.
It's accreditation.
Correct, and I didn't know if that was something that.
That is something we should look at, as people achieve accreditation as required, because we also possibly will have another employer receiving an additional accreditation prior to the end of this year. It's not much, but a little incentive to congratulate them and recognize that.
Could possibly put a bump in the salary. I think we really used, oh, you know how hard it was last, no, you guys can figure it out.
A new T-shirt or something.
Yeah.
So, we have to look that, add that to the budget?
Title, not a raise, what a deal. Title, not a raise, what a deal.
I need a clock on the door.
I'm sure you'd like that.
I think that's.
So those will be some changes, and they're part of the personnel.
Yeah.
You have.
So, finance and personnel.
Well, I have a couple things.
Honor?
I did try to call you, because I know you don't check your emails, but I'm sorry, I didn't hear back from you. I put out a couple of emails this afternoon, and the first one, and this is up to council, if you want to talk about this tonight, but this is something we talked about at our auditors' meeting last Thursday, was to appropriate the balance owed on the fire truck. I think that council feels they want to use the entire amount set aside in the cap fund to pay down on the fire truck, which is $640,000. And then we talked about the fact that although our revenue is going down, it looks like we're going to have a pretty healthy carryover. And so now might be the time to just plan on paying that balance off rather than borrowing money and use general fund money. And that's what we talked about, so that'll be up to you guys. It'll be around $400,000 out of the general fund.
And the university's contribution will be $250,000 over five years, right? So theoretically, you could have, I mean, it would be a much more minor payment, right?
True. We'll have to pay for the truck, and then just.
We're not going to do it for free?
And we're meeting in our local work group, and they're on their state fiscal year, so they have until June 30th, and they plan on that, so we'll anticipate having those payments over five years, I would assume, to go back into the general fund.
That would be a good place to reseed it back into, and then we would only be down in five years, $150,000 out of the general fund. But yes, it's my understanding that we have to pay for it before they deliver.
Yeah, most things like that.
So I don't think we can drive it off a lot until we actually pay for it. So anyway, like I said, it's about $400,000, might be $500,000, I don't know if you had a chance to look at that. I had two different amounts for the final cost of the fire truck, one a little bit less than the other one, so whatever you guys want to do on that. The other one I sent out has to do with a small amount of money that's going to be left in our EPA litigation fund. In the big picture, it's, it's pretty minimal, and I was a little uncomfortable about what we decided at the last minute to do with it, although I agreed to it at the time. And Nancy has looked into that this afternoon, and I've looked into it, and there's no, you know, emergency on this, so I think we should talk some more, at least Nancy and I for sure, and then decide whether to let it stand, or, you know, my last actual advice from our auditors was to get the law director's opinion on that, and I have taken information over there and just haven't had a chance to talk to him about it. So as I said, there's no need to hurry up and, and deal with that, and so I'd like to just.
As Chris said, you can wait till you're gone. I'm back.
You can tame it out there tonight.
Just a question on the discussion on the recommendation about the $640,000 for the, towards the purchase of the fire truck, to utilize that from the cap fund. But I guess I'm wondering on, procedurally, is that up for discussion tonight about the $400,000 from the general fund? So my question is just knowing that revenues might be down next year, and that's what goes into the general fund. I, I, you know, I'm trying to weigh in my own mind, so if that money goes down, and then we've used, you know, the remainder of that $400,000 to pay for the truck, so we don't borrow money, we're down that much, as opposed to what would be the percentage rate we could get if we borrowed the $400,000, and what would that cost us in interest? So those are my kind of questions, and trying to make a, you know, an educated decision about it.
I'm open to whatever council decides, of course, and we've already done the paperwork to borrow the money, and the interest rate is minimal, .45. And especially.
Over how many?
Borrowing $400,000 as opposed to the full million dollar cost.
It's a one-year loan.
No, but then we'd roll it over.
Roll it over, okay.
But, you know, we get excellent interest rates from our main institutions.
Sure sounds like a nice cushion to have, if you need it.
I was just going to actually borrow the $400 if I, if I was going to make the call, but that's up to you guys.
Well, it's very hard to know. But I mean, you could say, okay, let's save the money and just spend it over the next three years, but we're going to have to pay it back with interest, and as the time goes on. I mean, it's one-time money, and we saved it, now dollar by dollar, and we could blow it off when.
Or not the six, I'm not.
Paul, you're not talking about the.
Not the $640. I, I support that. Using up the $640 that's already been saved up, and it's already appropriated to spend on the fire truck, and that's fine.
So it's just a question I had, was only about the $400,000.
That makes me feel better.
Yeah. So the $400 would be, we take a loan for $400, and if we have a cash flow problem, we're not stuck. And if we have, if we don't have a cash flow problem, we could actually take out the $400 and pay it off by the end of the year. Forty-four, seven, was it?
I know, we'll be paying $50,000 each year, so you could even, in bad years, use that to pay your payoff.
Pay the payment.
You mean the university stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we know we'd be getting that over the next five years.
At least perhaps over.
The hope is that we wouldn't have to roll it over more than one year or two.
Mm-hmm.
If we're saving pennies, and if we have the $400 right now in the general fund, you know, somewhere in March, we could always say, oh, we're good to go, or first quarter into the year, we could say, okay, everything's looking nice, let's, let's pay it off.
Just remember, though, the minute it gets paid off, we're going to be asked to buy a pumper truck. Or two.
You gotta promise not to do that.
Not until it's paid off, that is the extent of promise.
Well, in that case, it's.
Borrow, borrow.
I mean, it's just.
Long-term.
Long-term.
So, and, and, just another question, so there would not be a penalty for paying off early?
No, no, there would not.
Okay.
Not on this, this is a local loan from a local bank, and the interest would be adjusted depending on the day we're paying it off, and all of that. So I'm fine with that. And the only thing, it's, I don't know if you want to decide tonight, or wait a week or two, however, the ordinance is in place, allowing me to borrow that, will expire at the end of the year. So if we wait to borrow it next year, then we have to go through that process again, which costs money when, because we use our bond council to prepare the one ordinance.
So it costs us more if we wait. The truck should be in.
Actually, it may come in in December, as a Christmas present, but.
Put a tree on it.
Santa Claus on it.
I support that if we're financing the $400-some-odd thousand, that we go forward with that this year.
Does.
And it's ready to go. We don't have to do anything.
Correct.
Yes. No action needed from you guys, except appropriation? No, it's already appropriated.
No, actually, that will need to be appropriated, and then we'll estimate the revenue and all that. So we can have that ready next week, maybe, or even if you're going to meet three times in December, you could get through three weeks.
However.
However, we'll work on that. So, okay, so we've agreed to borrow that balance, and if we can pay it off early, fine. If not, then we're not strapped, as we see how things come out in the wash at the end of the year. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Knowing that the fire truck is being delivered in December, you said?
At this point in time, we're hopeful.
Does it come with a dalmatian?
There's a pound rescue for that.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're going to close finance and personnel.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, no, we're not. Probably will, but.
What you need, Athens Transit Budget, we need additional appropriations, oh, what is it, about $60,000. The money is, there is enough money in the fund balance, but that'll be coming forward so that we can pay off the professional services and the gas and oil through the end of the year.
Yeah. So it's just to come to the end of the year?
And again, I, there'll be a number by the end of the year.
It's a conversation between Heather and Charlene on that, so.
Right, and she showed it to me a few minutes ago, that's, that's fine.
Well, the first of January, or the first of December, will be, the first meeting in December, we'll have three, right, probably? Or we could meet on a Wednesday, so if there are trouble with fuel amounts and other things, we can adjust those, can't we? We'll have time.
Okay.
We do have time. We do.
Anything else from the Service Safety Director? Deputy, no. Okay. So, planning and development, is there anything left to talk about?
I have a really, really tiny miscellaneous, very small. I'm in receipt of a resolution from the Commissioner on Disabilities, and they wanted to support the Graham Avenue project that is being constructed, and they, I'll put this in the, in the office so people can read it, and they also urged that similar housing be constructed within Athens, because they see a great need for this type of housing. And so I just wanted to acknowledge the receipt of this.
You have other miscellaneous, right?
No.
Okay. There are two that come across my desk. One is, there's a series of revocable licenses that are coming due, I think you probably got copies of it somewhere along the way. Okay. These are very signs in the city right of way that you have jurisdiction over. The ten years have lapsed on some of them. I think, at this point, John Paski has sent them to the owners, so they have to apply, just so you know, it's coming down the bank. The other one is a conversation with the planner, who's working on the redistricting of the wards. Actually, he said he had the information from Matt Trainor by the 15th, but I'll give him some time. More than likely, you'll get it before next regular session of council, but you'll still probably need some time to look at it and digest it. Again, you know, we're not going to gerrymander, we'll just present the different sizes of the process, and then you can play with what you need to play with in terms of that. It's up to council, I believe, that's the process, I seem to recall.
We are being told there are significant population changes that would, that change the population that you'll be representing, so there may be some discussion that you might want to have to kind of even it out.
Well, there's a big discrepancy between those of vote and the population, so, of eligible voters.
Well, it's population census.
That's what I was just saying, I mean, so, three-sixths is enormous, and it's full of voters.
But I think, actually, I think.
It was indicating that the first ward was significantly, it'd be overwhelmed, somebody would.
Third was.
Third, I mean, there was a thousand in the third ward.
Voters.
Voters, yeah. I know, and it's not population, but I do think the roles are so, when I was out campaigning, the roles are so full of people that are dead, and, you know, because they keep them on for three years. It's deceptive. You're just using the census, though.
Census, yeah, no, if they're dead, they probably didn't, it just faded.
I don't know.
And in the fourth ward was.
Nothing about.
You and your cat is very highly populated, just by their first look, but they'll provide the maps and people can look at it.
Realize in 10 years, we've added, what, university courtyard, summit.
And the population's the same.
Oh, yeah, well, that's, that was the way it settled in court.
That's why there's census is.
But at the same time, also a common place. And so you've had some trends in university states, which, not a lot of people there, but in terms of geographic area. And again, they've been trying to work it out, but probably you'll get the first glimpse sometime in the next week and a half.
And this has to be passed by January 1?
Is it January 1?
I'm asking.
I don't think so, I thought it was three days after October, October, November, December?
Nine days.[1717.12]